Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, could you please call the roll?
Debbie Tomusco.
She's absent, but she will be joining us here shortly.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Bear.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
He is absent, excused.
Art Politzki.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here.
Tony DeMarco.
He is also absent, excused. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have some approval of minutes dated November 28, 2016. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a minor correction on page two. The fifth line down towards the right, it reads Brooklyn Community Investment Corporation. It should be Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation. So I'll make a motion that we approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, wait. To approve as amended, Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
All right, everyone, well, trust everyone had a very Merry Christmas and are looking forward to the new year. So welcome to our council meeting this evening. Just for, to make a note, the organizational meeting for the city council will take place on Tuesday, January 3, which is a week from tonight, at 6:00 p.m. Per ordinance and charter, we are required to have an organizational meeting in January, and we will be selecting a council president, a president pro temp, and then all the committee assignments will be done that night as well. And so that will be next Tuesday, January 3, at 6:00 p.m. Of course, that is open to the public. You're welcome to attend. There are also, I'll go over the items on tonight's agenda. There are three items held in abeyance. Ordinance 2015-77, which is the position for Full-Time Economic Development Director. Resolution 2016-5, which is also in abeyance, and this is declaring the city council's intent to vacate a portion of Montgomery Place south of Manoa. And then ordinance 2016-32 is establishing Chapter 1362 certificat of inspection at point of sale and amending Section 1360.24 repair of code violations of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn, and we're still waiting on some sort of lawsuit that's going through the courts right now for that. Under old business this evening, ordinance 2016-87 is amending Section 951.99 penalty and enacting a new Section 951.98 civil infractions and penalty of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn, and this is up for third reading and adoption, and Mrs. Pucci will explain this one further when she gets her report. Resolution 2016-15 is on second reading, authorizing the city of Brooklyn to partner with the Ohio Treasurer's Office and OhioCheckbook.com. Ordinance 2016-88 is on second reading, amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-13, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employee's non-bargain agreement of the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-89 is authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the sale and purchase of vacant City of Brooklyn land bank property on Pepper Ridge Drive. This is permanent parcel number 43117072, for $1,000 and other good and valuable consideration. And ordinance 2016-90 is on second reading. It's adopting replacement Chapter 929 of the codified ordinances. It's the comprehensive stormwater management. This one, along with the three that I'll read in a second, will be passing by emergency this evening. Or no, we won't. We decided not to. They'll be passed in January. Ordinance 2016-91 is adopting replacement Chapter 1351 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances: Erosion and Sediment Control. Ordinance 2016-92 adopting replacement Chapter 933 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances: Illicit Discharge and Illegal Connection Control. And ordinance 2016-94 is adopting the city of Brooklyn Revised and Updated Stormwater Management Plan. And if that sounds like a bunch of gobbledygook, it's a lot of stuff. The EPA passed regulations, and the city is required to pass legislation in order to adhere to those. Our new business for this evening is ordinance 2016-95 is authorizing the inter-fund transfers and advances during 2016, and we hope to pass this by emergency this evening. Ordinance 2016-96 is the amended annual appropriations, which we will also pass by emergency this evening. Then lastly is ordinance 2016-97, amending Section 2 of ordinance 20075, which are fees for the admission and use of facilities at the city of Brooklyn Multi-Purpose Indoor Recreation Center by adding ice show participant rates. We hope to pass this by emergency this evening as well. We will now proceed with our normal council meeting. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name, address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. We will now start with our reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and we'll start this evening with Finance, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:30, and I will report on the items on our agenda that are either up for third reading and adoption or new on our agenda this evening. The first is ordinance 2016-87. We're going to hold this in abeyance until our next meeting, which will be January 9, 2017. This amends Section 951.99 penalty and enacting new Section 951.98 civil infraction and penalty of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn. I reported on this previously. This establishes civil infraction and penalty language for our garbage collection. So there is a little more tweaking that has to be done to this, so we look forward to passing this in January. Then the new items on our agenda this evening, which we anticipate passing by emergency measure, are ordinance 2016-95, which is our final transfer and advance ordinance for the year. We will enact the following transfers. From the General Fund to the Safety Forces Construction Fund, $280,500. From the General Fund to the Economic Development Fund, $731,648. From the Safety Forces Construction Fund into bond retirement, $280,500. And then from the General Fund to the I-480 Tideman Fund, which this was the project that we just completed for the dedicated right-hand turn lane onto I-480 West, $1,640,000. Then ordinance 2016-96 is our amended annual appropriations ordinance. This is where we go through for the final time of the year and reduce the level of expenditures in some areas and increase in others. Mr. Schaefer reported that they're going to go through everything tomorrow and get everything booked appropriately, so hopefully this will be our final meeting this evening. Basically, the total impact of all appropriation adjustments is $2,797,728. Now, that does include the $1.64 million that we had to book for the Tideman Road project. We're not paying all of that. The vast majority does come from a federal earmark and then also some county funds, but because that is not finalized yet, we need to basically encumber all those expenses. The general fund impact is an additional $1,634,600. So the total general fund appropriation for 2016 is $17,765,311. And the total impact for all funds is an additional $2,797,728 addition. So the total expenditures for all funds for 2016 is $27,695,992. And the final piece of legislation for this evening is ordinance 2016-97, which is going to establish fees for ice show participation, and it's going to have the following ranges. For Brooklyn Figure Skating Club members, from $15 to $35 per skater. For a Learn to Skate member, from $10 to $30 per skater. For Brooklyn Figure Skating Club members, $25 to $45 per family. And Learn to Skate member, $15 to $25 per family. We are establishing a range so that the rec. department does not have to continually come back to council, but we do anticipate starting these fees at the low end of the range. And just in case you were wondering what the little flurry of activity was prior to the start of the meeting, in order to adopt these three pieces of legislation, the two we have to adopt before the end of the year, we need five members here in order to suspend the three-reading rule, and we have a few members not here, but Ms. Tomusco is not feeling well this morning, but she is going to come up here so that we don't have to schedule another special meeting this week to get these pieces of financial legislation enacted prior to the close of the year. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. The only other report from commissions is the Planning Commission, and that is yours as well.
The next meeting of the Planning Commission is Thursday, January 5, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room located at 7619 Memphis Avenue. Under old business, we have three items. A request from Lamar Advertising to change a billboard to a digital display located along Interstate 71 on permanent parcel 431-07-002. A request from Lamar Advertising to change a billboard to a digital sign display located along Interstate 71 on permanent parcel 431-08-006. A request from Outfront Media LLC to relocate three billboards and also change two of them to digital display located along Interstate 71 on permanent parcel 431-09-005. All individuals may attend the City of Brooklyn Planning Commission meeting and have the right to comment, either in person at the meeting or in writing, to City of Brooklyn Planning Commission, 7619 Memphis Avenue, Brooklyn, Ohio, 44144. And Mr. Butler, I believe you're going to provide us with some information. Will that be this week or...? Okay. Thank you very much. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. We'll now move on to reports of council, and first up, I have Ms. Tomusco, but I'll let her catch her breath, so I'll give my report first. I do want to thank you for coming up. I know I'm feeling well, but thank you for coming in. That's okay. I want to thank all those that came out this last week for Christmas in Brooklyn at the Brooklyn Senior Center. Everyone seemed to have a very good time that was there. I think I want to thank the mayor for coming out and also for Ms. Politzki coming out. I also saw Ms. Tomusco briefly, but I don't know if you had to leave or what before the performance was over. I didn't see you at the end, but thank you so much for that. I know we had a conflict with the schools. They had something going on that night as well, so we lost a lot of people to that. But it was a very good time. It was a very successful event, and so thank you for those that came out. It really was a lot of fun. I hope everyone, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, had a blessed Christmas. I know that I had a great time. I feel like I've been driving all over the place, but that's what happens when your family's not in town. But I hope everyone had a great Christmas and also will have a blessed New Year. And that's all I have for this evening, and so, Ms. Tomusco, are you good?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. We'll move on with you then.
Good evening. I apologize for my lateness. Part of my difficulty is over the Christmas holiday, I got this crud that's been going around that so many people have had, and I'm still fighting it and doing a lot of sleeping, unfortunately at the wrong time. So anyway, I'm here. I hope everybody had a blessed Christmas, and I just really wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I really don't to many people's happiness. I don't have anything else to say or report. I'm just going to pass for this year and look forward to next year, where we'll take on our new challenges and our challenges from this year. So I wish everybody a very blessed and Happy New Year and good evening.
Thank you, Tomusco. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I just want to be brief. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. I do want to just take a minute or two to mark the retirement of Mr. Chuck Germana from the county council. Back in 2010, Mr. Germana was elected to the inaugural county council when we had a change in our county government, and we were part of his district. And I had known him, you know, a little bit, not very well, just he had been president of Parma City Council for 19 years, so I knew him through that association. But he, even though we were a very small sector of his district, because it was Parma, Parma Heights, Seven Hills, Lyndale, and Brooklyn, he really took his job seriously. He both got to know, you know, more people in Brooklyn, established new relationships, and strengthened some of the relationships that he already had. And he was really always there for us and very supportive. He became active in our chamber, and it wasn't perfunctory. He was at mostly every monthly meeting, all their functions. He participated in helping to make Brooklyn a better community, and he was always there to work with us and represent us. Unfortunately, when there was redistricting due to the census, we were no longer under his district. It was then shifted, and since then, we've been represented by someone who, we were basically lumped in with a large portion of Cleveland. So at the end of the week, Mr. Germana is retiring after 25 years in public service, and he got into public service just for that, to serve the public. No ulterior motives. He's a person of very good character, and he really did a good job representing our community, so I just wanted to publicly thank him for that and congratulate him on his retirement. And I would like to wish everyone a very happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up.
Thank you. I don't want to be redundant again, but I wish everybody a happy and joyous New Year and a Merry Christmas. This is always such a terribly hectic time of year when you have a small business and you're in the restaurant business. I feel like I'm an octopus. I'm in every direction. But sometimes you just have to take time and think of the important things this time of year. It's not always about, you know, rushing and pleasing everybody, some quiet time and thinking about what the New Year's going to bring. So once again, happy and joyful New Year. God's blessing on our little Brooklyn. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bovier. Next up is Mrs. Politzki.
Okay. I guess I'm going to repeat the same thing everybody else did. I hope everyone had a blessed Christmas with family and friends. One granddaughter came in from Florida and another from Columbus. So thankful that the weather was great for all travelers, so they had safe trips. I don't think other parts of the country were as lucky as we were. I knew Mr. Germana also. I kind of got to know him the past year because he is elector at our church, St. Bridgetts, and he is a really wonderful man, and I would like to wish him well in his retirement also. I hope he still stays as elector at our church because he is very good at it. And I ask all of you residents to keep the city council and the city administration in your prayers as we make the best decisions possible, as we prepare the budget for 2017. And I wish all of you a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzki. One thing I failed to mention when I gave my report was I had talked about the abortion ban that was put on the heartbeat bill that was before the governor, and also another bill, a sister bill to that, that would prohibit abortions after a certain period of time. I believe Mrs. Bell Bear brought it up a couple of meetings ago. But since that time, the governor actually vetoed the heartbeat bill, which was disappointing to me. But he did sign the 20-week ban on abortion, so that is now law in the state of Ohio. We're the 18th state to pass that, so that is a step, in my opinion, in the right direction. So I'm very grateful for that, but I wanted to follow up on that. All right, that is all the reports for council. We will now move on with the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I'd like to announce the holiday decorating contest winners. They still have their lights out. Maybe you can still check it out. The first-place winner is 8928 Torrance. Second place, 8708 Memphis Villas. And the third-place winner is 6606 Archmere. All of these houses look great. There were a tremendous amount of houses in our city that decorated beautifully. I also, while I'm talking about decorating, I like to thank Vern Cutright, our custodian, and the service garage workers who did the city buildings. They looked fabulous this year. Every time my daughter goes by, she comments how beautiful City Hall looks at night. So thank you for your hard work on that. I also would like to remind everyone with the new year, the city buildings will be closed next Monday. Trash will be pushed back a day. Special pickups will be canceled that week as well. I mentioned at the last council meeting, we have charter review next year. Our clerk of council, Mary Jo, sent out an email to council members reminding them. I just want to briefly read our charter. This is Article 28, just so everybody in the audience understands how the charter review works. It reads, "In January 1981, every sixth year thereafter, a charter review commission consisting of nine electors in the city of Brooklyn, holding no other office or appointment in the city, shall be appointed. The membership of the charter review commission shall be comprised of two members appointed by the mayor and one member appointed by each member of council. Such commissions shall review and recommend to council not less than 90 days prior to the next November election any alterations, revisions, and amendments to this charter as its judgment seems advisable. The council shall submit to the electors any such proposed alterations, revisions, or amendments to the charter at the next November election. Each said charter review commission shall cease to function on the day of the next November election. The members shall serve without compensation unless otherwise provided by ordinance." So keeping with, trying to keep this on time, I know some of the council members have picked people, some have not yet. The two members that I've selected is Ron Campbell and Carl Etheridge as my appointments. And then I also mentioned that we have an opening on the Planning Commission. I'd like to formally thank Ray Porterfield, who had to resign for his own personal reasons. I did have a proclamation ready for him. I'd just like to read this since he can't make it. "Whereas Ray has served on the City of Brooklyn Planning Commission from January 10, 2000 until December 9, 2016, and whereas Ray took pride in his position on the commission and worked well with several administrations, and whereas Ray had been a tremendous asset to the city of Brooklyn, applying his knowledge and time for the betterment of our community." So thank you again to Ray Porterfield for all the years of service he has done for the city of Brooklyn on the Planning Commission. And lastly, thank you, Ron, to Cleveland Baptist Church. I know this, I think it's your fourth year doing Christmas in Brooklyn. They do a tremendous job. I mean, they all sound like professional singers, so it is really a great thing to go to if you ever have a chance to go to in the future, if you haven't been. I know my daughter liked the performance. She fell asleep because it was a little too late, but she was talking about it the next day, so she did remember. So thank you for your church for holding that. I know one of the missions of your church is kind of a community organization, and that was one of the things that you brought to the community, so thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right, very good.
Yes, I can announce mine. My pick.
Okay. Sure.
I would like to announce my pick also for the charter review. I didn't know we were going to do that tonight. It is Mr. Tom Heights. Thank you.
All right. And before I move on, I just want to let you know that I sang in the Christmas in Brooklyn this year, so I can assure you, we are not all professionals. At least, I am not, by any stretch of the imagination. And then I also want to thank Mr. Porterfield. I did not know that he had resigned from that. Mr. Porterfield's kind of my neighbor. He lives on Tideman, but right around the corner from me, and he's a tremendous man, and we talk quite often whenever he's out walking his dog, and so I wish him well in whatever his next endeavors. All right, we'll now move on with the directors' report. We have just one this evening, and that is our finance director, Mr. Schaefer.
Good evening. Eric Seinenberg is the representative from the Ohio Treasurer's Office. He's scheduled to come next meeting on January 9. He will be at the Finance Committee meeting at 6:30 and then at the City Council meeting when the legislation for Ohio Checkbook is up for third reading and adoption. This is a transparency measure for the city to be able to load all of its accounting software onto the treasurer's website, and all residents will be able to see it. So if you have any questions about this transparency measure, or what is going to be available online, he'll be there to answer questions after Finance Committee and after the City Council meeting. We also have a special council work session slated for Thursday, the January 12, at 6:00 p.m., to continue exploring options to increase the city's revenue and decrease the city's departmental expenditures. So that is slated for another work session, and that will be open to the public as well. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. We'll now move on with legislation for this evening. There are three items held in abeyance. Those are on your agenda. I already read those for this evening. Up for third reading and adoption this evening is ordinance 2016-87. This is amending 951.99 penalty and enacting new Section 951.98 civil infractions and penalty of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn. Our service director did ask us to hold this in abeyance until the next meeting. There's a couple of things they want to add or change to this, and so I need a motion to hold it in abeyance until the January 9 meeting.
Move to hold in abeyance until the meeting on January 9, 2017.
Second. To hold in abeyance, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Resolution 2016-15, ordinance 2016-88, ordinance 2016-89, ordinance 2016-90, ordinance 2016-91, ordinance 2016-92, and ordinance 2016-94 are on second reading this evening, and I already read those into the record at the beginning of the meeting. Ordinance 2016-95 is authorizing inter-fund transfers.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Butler, for...?
The...
Mm-hmm.
Ordinance 2016-95 is authorizing inter-fund transfers and advances during 2016, and again, as Mrs. Pucci mentioned, we'd like to pass this by emergency this evening.
Introduce files, suspend rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adapt by emergency, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Ordinance 2016-96 is of the amended annual appropriations. Need a motion to pass this by emergency as well, please.
Introduce files, suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adapt by emergency, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
Then last of this evening is ordinance 2016-97, amending Section 2 of ordinance 20075, fees for the admission and use of facilities in the city of Brooklyn Multi-Purpose Indoor Recreation Center by adding ice show participant rates. And Mrs. Pucci went over these in her Finance Committee report.
Introduce files, suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adapt by emergency, Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Art Politzki.
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Just a couple of things that I'll look up to council from the other comments they have to make. Just two reminders very quickly. Again, our organizational meeting for council is to be held one week from tonight, on Tuesday, January 3, at 2017, and it was just mentioned by Mr. Schaefer, our next budget meeting will be held on Thursday, January 12, 2017. Want to, council, have anything? Directors?
Yes. I just wanted to comment on, so this is a question I've had it open for council for a while and gotten some feedback. You know, with us putting the, and John, I want to ask you on this, with us putting one more week or one more reading on the ordinance regarding the ability to give fines to people that aren't following the trash rules, we had talked about the idea of not allowing parking on trash day, and I wonder if that's something we should also, now that we have the time, add to this bill, just to kind of make it one complete package about trash? Because I know I've brought it up for the last couple of meetings in the last couple of weeks, and I've heard nothing but support for that idea, and I know Mr. Verba would be very happy to not have parking during trash day. Is that something we should try to add to that, or should we just wait and do a separate ordinance on that? I'm throwing that out just to get some feedback, because it might be expedient to add it as a thing or hold off. Any council input or thoughts on that?
I like that idea.
I would probably say with something like that, maybe it'd probably be a better second and a second ordinance. second, a second ordinance, it seems to be a little more entailed than what we're, at least those ordinances attempting to do, but that's probably for the law director and the service director and the mayor to figure out.
This is what I mentioned to you, Kevin, about adding the no parking to that, but maybe we should wait then and do another ordinance, I'm talking about the service department giving tickets and potentially adding the idea of no parking on trash day as a amendment to that ordinance, but perhaps we should wait and do it as a separate ordinance.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
That would be under the criminal code, though, correct? The parking?
I couldn't, unfortunately.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Just off the top of my head, it would likely be necessary for us to create some additional parking regulation, and the most probable home for that in the code would be where we regulate parking in other situations, so I suspect, even though you could conceivably shoehorn this additional parking regulation into this pending ordinance, it likely makes more sense to create a separate ordinance within the parking chapters.
Okay.
Thanks.
No, fine, I, again, I have thought about the possibility, but we'll just save it for another ordinance, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else have anything? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn, Debbie Tomusko?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Belbeer?
Yes.
Bart Politzky?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, Happy New Year, thanks for coming out tonight.